I'm going to call to order this work session meeting in Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is September 1st, 2021. Our first on our agenda is the Election Central space needs. I don't know who is speaking today, but there you are. Good morning, Ms. Rana.
Good morning. Great to see you.
Good to see you.
Want to check if my volume is working okay.
We hear you.
Wonderful. Well, thank you again and good morning. For those of you online who don't know me, I'm Shruti Rana. I'm a member of the Monroe County Election Board. So I'd like to start by thanking you for the opportunity to join you today and speak here this morning. What I want to do today is present a brief update on behalf of the Election Board to discuss both our space needs at Election Central, but also some upcoming and current developments that we think will impact voting in our community. So first, I just want to put in a plug. Please note that we are holding our monthly Monroe County Election Board meeting tomorrow, September 2nd, at 1:00 PM via Zoom. We understand the Commissioners will be joining us tomorrow at that meeting, so thank you for that. We look forward to seeing you. For members of the public, the Zoom link is available on our website at co.monroe.in.us. And of course, the meeting is both open to the public, but there will also be an opportunity for members of the public to make comments. So following that meeting, I also wanted to note that Clerk Brown is hosting an open house at Election Central from 3:00 to 5:00 PM again tomorrow, September 2nd. That is also open to the public, and it's really an opportunity to come view our space, ask questions, and see in person what our space needs are and how we work and how we're preparing for our next elections. Second, today I'd like to reiterate Clerk Brown's eloquent previous statements and updates to the Commissioners where she carefully detailed the space needs that we have at Election Central and the need to expand into the building as a whole. Clerk Brown's request for expansion, again, as I mentioned previously, has the full support of the Election Board. In addition, I'd like to take this opportunity to tell you a bit more and relay some of the concerns that have been raised by members of the public that have really convinced me of the need for this expansion. So I have spoken with a number of voters as well as nonpartisan groups who helped in previous elections to get out the vote and provide information to our community about voting and plan to do so in future elections. From those conversations, it is clear that voter confusion and inconvenience are a big factor in turnout or reducing turnout, and also impact how our community members feel about whether their voices are heard, as well as whether they can safely cast a ballot for the candidate of their choice. Given the national atmosphere over voting, people also have concerns about transparency in the voting process, as well as the ballot counting process, as well as ballot security and integrity throughout the process. All of these concerns, I think, really weigh in favor of expanding the space available in Election Central for voting, keeping things safe, convenient, and secure. And I really believe we must do everything in our power to support these goals of making it clear, convenient, and safe for our community members to vote. As you know, I also, in my spare time, focus on legal research and analysis, so I wanted to add some of my additional thoughts on the bigger picture. So in addition to these community-level concerns, we know that we can expect and will have a number of challenges at the Indiana state level that will likely make it harder for people in our community to vote going forward. As you noted earlier today, we're about to enter a contentious and possibly transformative redistricting process that's going to change districts and candidates for many people with very limited transparency and time for public review. It looks like we'll have, you know, basically days for the public to review the maps that will be released before they're scheduled to be voted on. We have, I think, from September 14th to September 28th or so to do that. So, you know, with such a limited time period for such a complex task, at best, I think people will be confused. At worst, their votes will be deliberately suppressed through packing and other efforts intended to dilute the votes of voters who disagree with our state leaders. As you know, in addition to these state-level concerns, we're in the midst of a national moment where not only are the stakes for voting rising, but also the Supreme Court itself is making it harder to vote. In a stunning decision this summer, in July, we had the Bernovich decision come out. It gutted the remaining portions of the Federal Voting Rights Act, which really enabled the last generation of voters, particularly voters of color, to come out to the polls and cast a ballot. So in that case this summer, the Supreme Court allowed states to restrict voting, even if these restrictions had a racially discriminatory or disparate impact. It also limited the ability of federal courts to block such state restrictions. So I think the stakes just cannot be higher, right? We could be on the precipice of, you know, the 21st century version of Jim Crow, unfortunately. In addition, I said the stakes cannot be higher in terms of getting out the vote and having people, you know, try their best to ensure that their voices are heard, given this climate. As you might have also heard, while we were sleeping last night, the Supreme Court effectively overturned or overruled Roe versus Wade. In that, you know, given that development, and voting and massive turnout might be the only way to preserve these and other rights going forward. We note, I want to note that actually, I think this is quite related. Abortion case law and voting case law at the Supreme Court level are very closely linked because both cases involve the weighing of facts and evidence and an assessment of discriminatory impact. So unraveling the use of evidence and facts in one area directly impacts the other. We saw that with the whole women's health case that came out a few years ago that required, you know, legislators to look at actual evidence on harm to women before taking action. Voting rights groups and voters used that case to successfully bring forth evidence of voter suppression and get those efforts overturned. Now, with what happened overnight, all of that is at risk. This is, you know, again, coming on the heels of the July decision. The Supreme Court's slate of hand last night really sends the message that confusion will reign going forward, and that's the best-case scenario, actually, I think, is massive confusion. Rights could be unraveled in the dead of night in ways that are difficult to counter legally. Again, we've really been hamstrung at the federal court level in terms of what courts can do. So again, voter turnout may be one of the few backstops that remain to support the democratic and constitutional principle that every vote should count and every vote should count equally. So in light of these concerns and developments, I urge you to support Clerk Brown's request for expanding the space available in Election Central, and I'm also happy to discuss the space request or any of the sort of larger legal issues that I've brought up today, and I also look forward to seeing you tomorrow.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rana. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Not at this time.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, we're gonna have to go for tea so you can explain the last night's decision to me. I hadn't heard that, and I just... Thank you, Professor Rana.
Thank you so much, and indeed, I think we are all concerned about accessibility for voting and how important that is. So we're all on board philosophically. So let's just hammer out the details and we'll start tomorrow.
You.
Excellent. Thank you so very much. All right. Next, we have Sam Crowe. I don't see him on the call. Let me see. Ms. Dayton is Commander Crowe on. Oh, yes, he is. Good morning. It's Commander Crowe from the jail.
Good morning, Commissioners. I bring to you today a contract between the Correctional Center and the Ivy Tech School of Health Sciences and School of Nursing. We have been working with Ivy Tech to allow the jail as a clinical site for nursing students. And, you know, I think this opens up several doors for us. It's very hard to find nurses that want to work in a correctional-type setting. So this allows us to get some of those students, those fresh faces, that are going through nursing school to come in and do some clinical hours at the jail and see how it is and how it compares to other type of settings where they might work. So this might open up the door and get some of those nursing students interested in the correctional field or correctional nursing. The students would be working with both our medical team and our mental health team, so they would get both aspects, medical and mental health. So this is something that we've been working on for quite a while, and I'm really glad to see is coming to the final steps of getting the contract done and going forward with it.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Cockrell, do you have a comment or anything?
I would just add that it's not listed on the Agenda cover sheet, but both Lee Baker and I have looked at this agreement, just so you guys are aware it has gone through our office.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And there's no cost?
No cost.
Excellent. Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
Yeah, I think this is a wonderful plan, especially when it has no cost. But this plan is going to be so beneficial both to the jail and to the nursing students. And I don't know who thought of it, but I'd like to congratulate them on coming up with such a good idea.
Good. Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, I support this as well. I'm really, actually, I was really tickled to see it come forward. I do have two questions, and I apologize for not getting these to you before the meeting. On page seven of the work packet on item L, it says the students may be required to sign a patient confidentiality statement. I was surprised that it wasn't worded that the students will be required. Is that, I don't know, perhaps Mr. Cockrell can address that?
I'm looking for page seven.
Of the work packet. It's item L.
Okay. And I think, in my mind, that one... Oh, go ahead, Sam. Or are you frozen?
He is frozen.
I think he's frozen. That says we can require them, right? That we may require that, right? So I think that's when we talk with, you know, as the program gets going, depending on what level of student we're getting, we can require that. It doesn't prohibit us from requiring it, so we can and probably will, to be honest with you, but it allows us to do that.
I guess I was surprised that we aren't requiring it, given that they're working with both mental health and physical health issues. I'm just raising the issue.
And I think you're right. For the people who are going to be directly dealing with the patients, I think some of them may not be dealing directly with the patients. And so, you know, we want to make sure that the people who are directly dealing it will do it, and this gives us the opportunity to do that.
Okay, and then under item N, the first thing, I understand that there's drug testing, and I'm pleased also that that is part of what we're doing. It says that there'll be testing for hemp. Well, some hemp products are legal in Indiana, and so is there a threshold for that, or how is that defined better, I guess?
I think, and Sam can correct me wherever I'm misspeaking here, but we are testing for those things, and when you get the test results back, or maybe, Ash, it's been a while since I've taken a drug test, you'll have to apologize. I'll have to apologize for that, but I think when I take the drug test, I tell people what I've done, right? So I think the last time I said I had a poppy seed muffin before, when I was a camp counselor in college, you know, I had a poppy seed muffin. So I put that on that, and so that way, if something popped up, there's an explanation. If there's no explanation, then I think you go back to the candidate and say, "What's going on here?" and making sure. So I don't, I think testing for that is appropriate. I think what you do with the test results, because there's an entire form. I mean, I might have a prescription. I'm looking at the stuff.
Yeah, a prescription.
I might have a prescription for some of this, and it might be perfectly normal, and I should be taking it, and it's fine. So it's just an explanation occurs with the testing process.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that makes sense. I wonder, Jeff, if we should have a nondiscrimination clause in this, even though it's not a contract, it's an agreement?
I think I could certainly add that.
Okay. Great. All right. So can we, do you think we can have this on our agenda next week? Would that be okay with you, Commander Crowe?
That's fine.
Any objections from my colleagues or...? Commander Crowe?
Just to make a few more statements about this, our site manager, Jaina Thomas, she went to school at Ivy Tech, so she's the one that has kind of seen this through, and she's done a wonderful job since she has become our site manager. Unfortunately, she is off on maternity leave right now. She just had her child. But I'm sure she'll be very excited to know that this is on the agenda and actually going through. As far as the, as letter L, that's no problem. We can have them sign a confidentiality agreement. And as Mr. Cockrell stated, you know, anytime they're going to be dealing hand-in-hand with patient, I think that's something that is necessary. And then as far as the drug testing, I believe some of the things that are legal, like the CBD oil, doesn't have the addictive chemicals in them that you would have, like smoking marijuana or the actual marijuana plant itself. So, but that's something that would be identified when they do the drug screening.
Yeah. Makes sense. Great. So we'll hopefully see this on our agenda next week. Thank you for bringing it forward. It's a great, it's a great idea, as Commissioner Jones said.
One other thing, before we leave, the sheriff is working with Indiana University School of Nursing to use the jail as a clinical site for Indiana University as well. So we're trying to tie those ties with the different things that we have here in our community.
Excellent. Great idea. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. All right. Next, we have Ms. Purdy.
And actually, I would like to turn this over to Mr. McAfee, and I believe he would like to share his screen. He is here to share some exciting news for the Quarry Project that has been somewhat discussed and has not been finalized. But again, I'm going to let him speak to this because he's the one who has the information. And Mike, did you want to share your screen?
I do. I do. Thank you. Thank you so much, and...
Go ahead when you're ready.
Yeah. Can you see it? Can you see my screen now?
Not yet.
Okay, hold on a second. Now you can, I think, right? Great. Thank you. Thank you for your time, Commissioners, and thank you, Angie, for your help, and everybody on the call. It's great to speak with you. Very quickly, I wanted to just give a shout out to the Paint the Town Purple event that you're talking about on Friday night. That's great. I'm sure you're aware of this. There will be plenty of things going on downtown that evening. The Limestone Comedy Festival kicks off. There's a gallery walk that evening. They will be setting up for the Fourth Street Festival, so I'm sure there'll be plenty of activity down there, and people walking by and seeing the Paint the Town activities. So that's a great tie-in that'll all be happening down there. I did want to say, I just want to always give a shout out to the Health Department. I sit in on those calls on Fridays and listen to Ms. Cottle and everyone else in their wisdom and giving us all advice. She really explained it well. Last week, she was asked a question with the status, the Delta variant, and what's going on. They were asking about traveling between counties and things like that because really, you know, what we're seeing here, at least in Bloomington and Monroe County, you know, we have, as you said, we're that yellow status, and you know, the university's doing well as far as students being vaccinated and things like that. I think what we're seeing is people feeding in from the counties that may not be vaccinated. So Visit Bloomington, we want to encourage everybody to follow those safe guidelines for safe travel, as well as everyone getting vaccinated. That's the way we beat all of this stuff. We have a lot of businesses, a lot of partners in the community that are trying to remain open and operate safely. Please be patient with them. They're all understaffed and going through all of that. So I just want to thank everybody for their support of the hospitality industry. It's so important in Monroe County, and we are getting ready to head into the thick of busy, busy times when it comes to weekend events and football games. So everybody, please travel safely, follow the rules, and get vaccinated so we can beat this thing once and for all, which kind of relates into what I'm going to share with you now. I did want to say, if you see this on our website, our promise to visitors, we're always sharing COVID information, the latest stuff, trying to push people to travel safely. We've been doing that all through the pandemic, and we will continue to do that. It's very important to us to promote safe travel. What I want to talk to you about today very quickly was the county is very much involved in the ARPA funding and the funds that the county is receiving. There's all kinds of different funds out there and different grant opportunities. This is the U.S. Economic Development Administration's website. If you see, I'm right here under Funding Opportunities. If you go over here to the right and you scroll down, I'm going to click on this Travel, Tourism, and Outdoor Recreation. And it takes me to another grant opportunity. They have set aside $750 million in Federal Economic Development Administration funds for travel, tourism, and outdoor recreation opportunities. Now, this is separate than what you're getting. This is separate than what the city's getting. This is actually the state of Indiana. The Indiana Destination Development Corporation is receiving about $6 million out of this program, and what I'm talking about is completely separate from that. If you go down here, there's an opportunity for competitive, they've set aside $240 million for what they're calling Competitive Tourism Grants, so that the county, Visit Bloomington, the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, the city, Indiana University, Ivy Tech, organizations like that could apply for this $240 million in the form of Competitive Tourism Grants. You see down here to the bottom, the award ceiling is $10 million, and the award floor is $100 million. I'm going to pop off of this and go to a couple of things. I did some, I've sat through two webinars on this, and I think we have an opportunity here for some opportunities for some funding for the Quarry Park or some of the trail projects the county is working on. I know Angie just spoke about a few in your meeting earlier, and I thought all of those were potential candidates. So again, I'm going to take you through six quick screen grabs that I did the other day, about two more minutes here, and I'll be able to answer questions and just say a couple of things and be out of your hair. But again, $240 million for Economic Development Agency Competitive Grants to fund in regions most adversely affected by damage to the travel, tourism, and outdoor recreation sectors from the coronavirus pandemic. Well, as you know, we finished 40% in 2020, or 2020, we finished 40% behind 2019 as far as visitor revenue coming into the market to its impacts. So many programs across this market, across the county. So the EDA is wanting to fund these Competitive Tourism Grants. They expect to fund 80% of project costs, at least, potentially up to 100%. What Competitive Tourism Grants will fund travel, tourism, and outdoor recreation projects that include non-construction and construction activities. Support the development and implementation of a community's development strategy for travel, tourism. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm actually talking about a program for infrastructure for the Quarry Park or other types of trails, but all kinds of things would be eligible. Who is eligible? The applicants, again, could be an economic development district like the BEDC, but you can also go down to the state, the county, the city, or other political subdivision of state, which would be Monroe County itself, an institution of higher education, as I talked about before, or a public or private not-for-profit organization acting in cooperation with the officials of a political subdivision. So Visit Bloomington could apply, working in partnership with the county if it came to that. The timeline for this, it's already opened up. They started in July. They want to try to have all funds obligated by the end of September of '22, and the funds need to be spent by May 31st of '27. But again, eligible uses, recovery project implementation, including construction projects for cultural arts and tourism facilities, zoos and aquariums, new outdoor recreation and trail infrastructure and public access enhancements, which again, I think applies to the potential Quarry Park. I know you've got a long way to go on that project. I listened to the scientist's presentation last week. I certainly have questions about what she said, but I just want to do, and you can read what's here. Next step to apply, you go back to the site with you. Fill out your intent to apply and that type of stuff. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention and put this out there that Visit Bloomington is here, willing to step up and try to apply in partnership with county for the Quarry Project, a trail project, or anything that you might be interested in, or at least researching it, looking further into it, to find out if there is a good opportunity for us there. And with that, I know it's brief, but I'll leave it up to, I'll leave it for questions and see where we go from here. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. McAfee. I appreciate you and all your hard work. Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
I just want to thank you so much for having done this research and informing us all about it, and it sounds like a very exciting opportunity. I did want to ask if you will also be giving a similar presentation to the county council?
Sure. I've actually had conversations with Jeff McKim and Cheryl Munson a little bit about just, and Kate Wilts, as far as showing this information. And I did tell them I was reaching out to you and going from there. So yes, I'm going to say yes, that I will reach back out to them and see if I can talk more specifically with them once we have this conversation.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, can we apply for more than one grant because of having different projects, do you know?
I don't know. You mean within this $240 million program? Or do you mean because of your other, because of the other programs that you're utilizing ARPA funding from?
Well, if we did something for the Quarry Land Park, that would be different than some of the trails projects, perhaps. So that's why I was asking.
Yes, you can, but you just have to make that very clear that you are using ARPA funding for other projects as well. They would have to be separate, I believe. You couldn't wrap them all into one grant. But I'm not exactly an expert on that, and you better believe I'll find out the questions. These are all the questions I think we would have if I, you know, whatever, if you direct me maybe to get with Mr. Cockrell going forward or something like that to try to look into this.
Oh, I'm quite in favor of going forward with some of this. But also, have you worked with Kelly Whitmer at all because of the trails?
I haven't. I mean, I know Kelly over the years, and again, I could reach out and call her. Again, I wanted to make sure. I didn't know, maybe I might log on, and you would say you were very aware of this, you're already doing something, or just where we went from there. So I wanted to just make sure, at least we had your blessing to try to research it further. So I'll give her a call as well.
Thank you. That would be great. Yeah, that's a great suggestion. Yeah, I'm not sure. It sounds like we're all on board with at least finding out more, and we are so grateful for your willingness to assist us with this part of it. I think it'd be interesting to see if we have projects that are eligible, and then to go after some of these funds would be a great idea. So I think that's wonderful, and I appreciate the work so far and hopeful that we can apply for at least one project.
Yes, Cheryl Munson had mentioned the pedestrian-covered bridges that are being looked at for the Greenway Trail as a possible project as well. So yeah, I think those, I think all those fit under here, anything to do with trails, which again, were huge advocates for, so...
Right. That's excellent. Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Please move forward and keep us posted, and we'll work with you however we need to and get something done.
Great. I'll follow up with Angie about my next... Great. I'll follow up with Angie about my next steps. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. McAfee. We appreciate you. All right. Does any other department head have an update for us or an item to present?
I've got a, a couple of things. If I may.
Please.
The, the first is I wanted to make sure you were, I know you're aware that the Seven Oaks have filed an appeal from their health emergency enforcement action. And I wanted to just go briefly through the process for you and the public to understand. We have, we do have a policy in place that outlines the process. The first, the whole situation kicks off when an enforcement action is taken. This could be a citation. It could be a business closure or anything like that based upon an emergency health order. Right? So once that ticket is issued in this case, I'm just going to use citation for the health enforcement action because that's the easiest word to say. And I think it encompasses what it will be probably most of the, of the things we look at. They must file an appeal within seven days of that ticket being issued. And their appeal has to meet certain requirements, such as it has to have contact information for whoever's appealing. It must include the enforcement action itself, the, the ticket in this case, and it must have state of reason they are appealing. Once the, and that is given to the auditor, once that is given, the commissioners have 15 days where they can determine if a hearing is going to occur. If, if that is determined, then we, we get notice to the Health Department and the appellant saying here is when the hearing will be, and that will be within 15 days once that determination is made. So you have 15 days to make the determination. If you make a determination that you, that this is going to have a hearing, you have that 15-day window to have that hearing. All, the, all information, once that appeal is filed about that between, either with the appellant or the Health Department has to be shared with the commissioners in writing and also has to go to the other party. So if the Health Department sees the appeal and wants to give you information, that information also has to go to the appellant and the vice versa is true. In this case, you're a hearing officer, and I, and I know you guys understand this due to the township relief hearings where, you know, it's almost, it's a quasi judicial setting where, you know, both parties state their case and, and it goes through. But I think that's important to remember. At the hearing, the appellant has to be present or it doesn't work. Going back, if you guys do not determine in that 15-day period to that a hearing is warranted, after 15 days, it's deemed, the appeal is just deemed denied. So that's how that works. And then if you do have the hearing, you have to make a decision within 15 days after that. And again, using the poor release or the township assistance setting, that's usually done on the spot. These may have a little bit more complex issues where you guys may want to think about it and then, and do that work later. The the decision has to be issued in five days and it has to state the reasons, to state the legal and factual basis for your determination. And it has to go to both parties. And so that's kind of the process. Want to make sure that, that you are aware of it and that, you know, anybody listening to this is aware of it. Yes, we do have a process for handling these appeals and this process is required by state law. Okay, so that, that's number one. Number two, I wanted to give you a brief update on the building lease for the testing site. Again, until we get the agreement with the, with the state on the labs, it's, it's kind of nice to have, but we can't really start that site yet. The, the lease I and it was a little bit difficult because of vacations, but you know, they have made the space slightly smaller because they have some, some items that they have stored in a, in a walled off room that was part of this. I, hearing back from Penny, we think that the, the site is still usable and it still will be effective. If something happens, we'll have to revisit that. They did reduce the lease amount based upon the change in square footage. So I think that's a, that's an update for you guys on that. And that's all I really have unless you have questions.
Thank you. All right. Questions, comments? Commissioner Jones?
I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
I have a question about the appeal process. If we do we have to formally sort of vote on that next week on whether or not we want to hear that? Or how, how do we make that decision?
You would have to vote on whether to have, that, that the hearing is appropriate. If you, if not, if you, if you do not vote, then after 15 days, it's deemed denied. So 15 day, we received it last Wednesday. So next Thursday would be the 15th day for that particular appeal.
And, and if they didn't file the appeal appropriately, if they, if items were missing or something like that, what does that do to their right to appeal?
Well, I have, in, in our policy, it allows the legal department to make sure they meet the bare minimum. Right? That they, that they filed it on time, that it contains the, the information required. It has the ticket. It has all that. And it's a verified, it's verified that it's under penalties of perjury. That everything in it's accurate. I've reviewed it for that. It meets all those requirements. So it, it meets the baseline requirement for an appeal. If they didn't include information, they should have that. I mean, that's kind of like any court case out there is that, you know, you, you provide the information and if you forget something, then the people, the adjudicators don't have it to consider.
Thank you. Yeah. And what, my question relates also to the appeal and what kind of a timeframe is needed for notification of the parties and for the hearing? How many days? Is it 48 hours?
I, I would expect that you'd want to give at least 48 hours. Probably, I mean, you have a two-week window. So I would probably think you probably want to give closer to seven days.
Yeah.
And then that gives you some wiggle room if a key participant comes to you and says, you know, here's what's going on and I can't, and you guys can consider moving that even a little later.
Got it. Good deal. Thank you so much. And let's see if there are other department heads that have an update or some information to present. Okay, see none. Anything else from the board? Okay. So, so with that, we're going to adjourn the work session and we will come back in one week for the next work session following our regular meeting. Everyone get vaccinated. Thank you all. Be well.